Good evening, I'm going to call the Old Bridge Board of Education to order. Statement of adequate notice by Board President. Pursuit into New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Verizon Vias Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, January 7, 2014. The Board will take formal action on Tuesday, January 7, 2014.
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roll call.
Andriani?
President.
Borsili?
Here.
Callahan? Colabella?
Here.
De Prima?
Here.
Donofrio? Solakowski?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Quorum exists.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at this point in a reorganization meeting, it's a little different than a regular Board meeting, so I'm just going to give you a brief overview as to what will happen. At this point, I will announce, the first thing I'll do is announce the winners of the November election, the highest vote-getters first, and then I will administer, at the podium, the oath of office to each individual Board, new Board member. At that point, we will do a new roll call of the new constituted Board, and after they're seated at the table, I will take nominations for a new Board President. Once a new Board President is appointed or selected, I will pass the gavel over to that new Board President who will start the process to elect, to appoint a new Vice President. So, to begin, the top three vote-getters were Annette Hopman, she received 4,756 votes, Nancy Mongan, she received 3,793 votes, and Balwinder Singh, he received 3,016 votes. So, at this point, I would ask Mrs. Hopman and anyone else who would like to go to the podium, and I will begin the swearing-in process.
I'd like to get to say something before I step down. Okay. Rich, do you want to have the people, Fred is saying he wants to say something before we do this.
Mr. Mayor, before we swear in the new Board members, I think it will be an appropriate time for the outgoing Board members who are here tonight to say a few words. So, I only see Mr. Fred Colabella at the podium, so I will open the floor up to you, Mr. Colabella, for any last words.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Thank you, Board members. Thank you, Administration. Thank you, teachers of Old Bridge, and we do have some fine, great teachers in this town. While I've been sitting up here, everything has been about the kids. I've never swayed from that. It was always for their best education, that they get a broad spectrum of an education, that they're well-rounded. I thank past Board members, and I welcome Board members that are coming on for their help, and I hope that they keep it going the same way, that everything is about the children. I'm glad to have been part of kindergarten, and body field, and, you know, technology. There's just so many things, you can't say it in one statement, there was so much. As the new Board members come up, I hope they remember it's about the taxpayer and the children. The children come first, and while you're looking out for the taxpayer. I really appreciated my time up here, and I've had a good time serving, and I'm going to miss everybody up here. It's kind of, we're a family up here, and it's always been that kind of atmosphere. I'm going to miss all the Board members up here. We have great teachers in this town. Support them, come out to meetings, be a part of what goes on, have a say in what goes on, be supportive, and do what you can to help our schools and our teachers, you know, be that extra I, be that, have that extra idea, whatever works. But I thank you all for this time, and thank you very much for everybody that's supported me over the years. I truly appreciate that in my heart. Thank you very much.
Mr. President? Mr. President? Gino asked me to say something in his absence. May I?
Yes, you can say a few words on Mr. Donofrio's behalf. I was going to save that at the end, but if you want to say a few words now, okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, it's yours.
Okay, we'll begin with Mrs. Hopman. I, Annette Hopman, please repeat after me.
I, Annette Hopman.
I'm sorry. You raise your right hand. Okay. Okay. Right hand, okay, we got it. I, Annette Hopman.
I, Annette Hopman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people, so help me God.
Of the people, so help me God.
I, Annette Hopman.
I, Annette Hopman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of Member of Board of Education.
For the office of Member of Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
As a voter pursuant to law.
As a voter pursuant to law.
Or disqualified from membership due to conviction.
Or disqualified for a member, of member for?
From membership due, from membership?
From membership.
Due to conviction.
Due to conviction.
Of any crime or offense.
Of any crime or offense.
As listed by law.
As listed by law.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the Old Bridge Board of Ed, and congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's enough. Thank you.
Ms. Mongan?
I, Nancy Mongan.
I, Nancy Mongan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will, and that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Balwinder Singh.
I, Balwinder Singh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of Member of Board of Education.
For the office of Member of Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
As a voter pursuant.
As a voter pursuant.
To law.
To law.
Or disqualified from membership.
Or disqualified from membership.
Due to.
Due to.
Conviction of any crime.
Conviction of any crime.
Or offense as listed by law.
Or offense as listed by law.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and welcome to the Old Bridge Board.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Singh?
I, Balwinder Singh.
Nancy, you should take a seat up at the table.
I, Balwinder Singh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Nancy Mongan.
I, Nancy Mongan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of Member of Board of Education.
For the office of Member of Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
As a voter pursuant to law.
As a voter pursuant to law.
Or disqualified from membership.
Or disqualified from membership.
Due to conviction of any crime.
Due to conviction of any crime.
Or offense as listed by law.
Or offense as listed by law.
And that I faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and welcome to the Old Bridge Board.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Singh?
I, Nancy Mongan.
Nancy, you should take a seat up at the table.
I, Balwinder Singh.
Nancy, you should take a seat up at the table.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will, and that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Balwinder Singh.
I, Balwinder Singh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will, and that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Balwinder Singh.
I, Balwinder Singh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will, and that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Balwinder Singh.
I, Balwinder Singh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will, and that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and welcome to the Old Bridge Board.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Andriani, what I'll be doing is reading the Code of Ethics that are in, that are covered by the current statutes, and I will also be asking all Board members to sign a certification that they've received and heard this reading, and we also encourage conversation after, with any questions to Board Attorney about the, any of the items listed in the Code of Ethics. The first item listed in the Code of Ethics is A. I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B. I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed,
nominate Kevin Borsili.
Okay, Mr. Borsili, we have a nomination for you. Anyone else? I'd like to nominate Mr. Solakowski. Do you want to use a second for each one?
Mrs. President?
No, you do not need a second.
I would like to nominate Mr. De Prima.
Mr. De Prima, thank you very much. So if Mr. Borsili, Mr. Solakowski, and Mr. De Prima, is there anyone else that would like to put forth a nomination? No? Okay, so then we will proceed with the vote? Is that for me or Mr. Mara to do? Mr. Mara, take it away.
For Mr. Borsili, Andriani.
Um, no.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Hartman?
No.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
No.
Weber?
Yes.
The yeas are four, the nos are five. The second nominee was Mr. Solakowski. Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
No.
De Prima?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
No.
Singh? Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber? The yeas were four, the nos were five. The third nominee was Mr. De Prima. Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
No.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
The vote was eight yeas and one no. Congratulations, Mr. De Prima, the new vice president of the board.
Congratulations, Sal.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. At this point in time, according to our agenda, it's time for the hearing of residents. Our on-agenda items only. And as I view the audience, um, I don't see any, I see one, Mr. Gonzalez. Nice to see you again.
Well, I came out tonight, I'm missing one person I wanted to thank and congratulate, but that's fine, I'll give them a call later. Andrew Gonzalez, former board member, former board president, just wanted to make sure I came out tonight to congratulate the winners taking our, taking our spots on the board. Tonight would have been my last night, but as some of you know, I'm teaching and living now in Newark, New Jersey. Ironically, I'm actually wearing my new high school's T-shirt today, or polo shirt. So, uh, just wanted to come back, kind of a homecoming. Weird to be in this angle. So, Ms. Mongan, Mr. Singh, and of course, Ms. Hartman. Congratulations on your victories. I somehow was still on the ballot, but, uh, that was a mistake and error in timing. But congratulations, I wish you all the best of luck to the two new board members, specifically Mr. Singh, because you're new, kind of, just in general, Ms. Mongan has been around here for a very long time and is very experienced, but to you, just definitely listen a lot. Listen to what everybody has to say, no matter what.
But I look young, right, Andrew?
Yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Mongan, always, always, always a pleasure to have you in meetings and working with you all those years, all three, over three years. I feel like I've aged a lot, and yet I'm still young. But congratulations on the victory. I was very happy when I heard that you were running. I know in terms of finances, you know, the board's definitely in safe hands. Ms. Hartman, I'm so, so happy that you are back on the Board of Education, representing the people of Olbridge. I think the, the vote count kind of showed that people really did miss you and wanted you back, as did I, when you were away for that year. President Andriani? That sounds great. And honestly, I'm so happy that you were elected president. Congratulations. I know you're gonna do a great job. I think I talked to you the most, second most, between you and Gino was a toss-up, who I talked to the most during my time as president for advice and for guidance, and I always wanted to thank you for being that, that voice of guidance and wisdom as I kind of grew as, as a board member. Sal, awesome. I'm so happy that you got vice president. Always kind of had the devil's advocate role, kind of always just looking at the other perspective, no matter, even if you were in agreement. I couldn't tell sometimes, but congratulations on the vice president.
I should pride myself on that part, but thank you.
I think you guys are gonna be a great team. I'm actually really excited to see this new board, some changeover with a few of us leaving. Fred, didn't miss you back there. Congrats again on, on job well done. I think we did a great job this past, this past year together, and I'm sad to see you go, but, you know, I know, I know you're happy, you're gonna have some more time to stay at home with, with the family. Gino, if he's watching, I'm sure he is, Junior. I play, I play voicemails from Gino for my friends in, in the Teach for America program from California, because they've never really heard the accent. So I'm like, oh, there's this guy I serve on the board who has like the perfect Northeastern accent, so they get the, "Junior, we gotta get this vote through." So it kind of gives us giggles and stuff like that during some of the more stressful moments in, at work, but I'm really proud to say, you know, I always tell people I'm from Olbridge, constantly do it, and my experience is here, and I think some of my favorite moments are throughout the day when I'm talking with my principal, and I steal ideas from what I kind of saw here in the district. And, uh, yeah, that always kind of gives me great pride. So Olbridge is really doing some great things for when I do have time to check in, and that's all I want to say. Congratulations, and keep doing, doing what you're doing. Again, congratulations to the superintendent and assistant superintendent. Heard you guys doing great, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonz, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Always nice to see you. Door is always open. Anybody else from the public going once, twice? I feel like an auctioneer? No? Okay. Moving along then, we are into finance. A lot of those are resolutions, but we have Finance 1, 2, and I believe 3. Can I get a motion for that?
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Do I have a second?
Hartman will second.
Ms. Hartman will second. Row call, please, Mr. Mara. Okay, first we have discussion. Usually, Mr. Weber has the discussion on finance. He didn't say anything, so I just figured we just move along. Not this list. Okay, row call, Mr. Mara.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions pass.
Thank you, everyone. Number 12, Supplies, Equipment, and Services. We have just 1 and 2. Do I have a motion?
Dunn will move Supplies, Equipment, and Services, Items 1 and 2.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Do I have a second? Mr. Weber, thank you. Any discussion? Row call, Mr. Mara.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions pass.
Thank you all. Number 13, Board Secretary and Board Business. I believe that's 1 and 2. A lot of this is about scheduling. We had some discussion on that earlier. I don't know if we will have any more. Okay. Before we have discussion, Mr. Mara has informed me he has to read the Code of Ethics, or a portion thereof, so, Mr. Mara?
Ms. Andriani, what I'll be doing is reading the Code of Ethics that are in, that are covered by the current statutes, and I will also be asking all board members to sign a certification that they've received and heard this, this reading, and we also encourage conversation after, with any questions to the board attorney about the, any of the items listed in the Code of Ethics. The first item listed in the Code of Ethics is A. I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B. I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. C. I will confine, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. D. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to seek that they are run well. E. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises or take any private action that may compromise the board. F. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan policy, political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. G. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. H. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief school administrative officer. I. I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. And J. I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of any administrative resolutions. That is the entire list of the Code of Ethics for all school board members. If any of you have any questions about the, any of those items, I would suggest that you direct them to Mr. Porton. Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome, Mr. Mara. So that takes care of the reading for number 1 under that section, so now is there any discussion on that? Or number 2, which is our meeting dates. Mr. Weber?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's kind of ironic that the two things are on the same motion. We have 11 regular meetings scheduled, and of course, the one is the Christmas meeting, so that's where we usually have the show. So that leaves us 10 other meetings. I think it would be very nice if we read, there are 10 ethics, by the way, if we read one of them at the beginning of each of the 10 meetings.
I have no, no problem with that. Is that okay with everybody on the board? Then, then we will incorporate that onto the agenda, into the agenda somewhere. Mr. Weber, thank you very much.
Reminds us why we're here.
Would you like to read them? No. At each meeting? Okay, so we'll put Mr. Weber on the agenda for reading, for reading that, if that's all right, or should we rotate? Either or? Pleasure of the board. We'll have a discussion, and if you would all let me know sometime between now and the next meeting, we'll figure that out. All right, thank you. One each month? We can do that.
Mrs. President, regarding the scheduling, I've just completed my first year. I have not missed any meetings yet. Ironically, now I am the vice president, I will not be at the agenda meeting next week. I apologize in advance, but I...
All right, thank you very much for letting us know. Okay. Your presence will be missed, Mr. De Prima. Ms. Mongan?
Mrs. Andriani, I just have a question regarding the location of the agenda session. I believe there was discussion on moving the venue back to the Administration Building. Is that going to be the case? Because the motion states the Olbridge Main Library.
Well, at this point, that still is where, where the old board, as of a half hour ago, was planning to meet. We can certainly talk about that along with committees and other reorganization or anything that we need to do as we move forward. And again, that's the pleasure of the board. One of the original changes to the other room in the media center was to have the capacity for a larger audience. Whether or not that worked out with the configuration is, is up to interpretation. I know a lot of, a lot of people had difficulty, they were sitting behind, couldn't hear. Some people were behind a pole. Many of the board members have expressed the fact that they felt the administration, the conference room in the Administration Building was not only more informal, but a way in which people seemed to have a little more freedom in, in speaking. And so I don't know what we're going to do at this point. I don't, that's not my decision to make alone. I don't think it should be. So if, if any, again, anybody has any input, as of right now, next two, next agenda session, we will be in the media center. Okay? And then we'll, we'll go from there.
Ms. Andriani?
Unless, unless we have a motion that we can vote on.
I think we need to discuss it before that.
Ms. Andriani? My opinion is, I, I agree that it was better off in the Administrative Building. You have the round table, I think it's a little bit more conducive to discussing items as a board collectively. I think when we're in, you know, kind of stretched out this way, it's, it's a little bit more difficult to, to debate certain issues. So my opinion would be to move it. If I recall, I don't know that it was ever voted on to move it to the library. I think there was, I think at the time, the board president said, "Let's move it to the library," because that board president at the time liked the library, and we just moved it. So, you know, I, I think we should just get the opinion of the board tonight and make a decision where we want to host them.
I think one thing we have to think about is now that we're filming the agenda sessions, I don't know if Mr. G is back there, but would it be feasible to do it in, if, if the board decides to go back to the Administration Building, sorry? Would that be okay for you guys?
Mr. De Prima, that was also another point of contention. For many years, Mr. Solakowski was very vocal about having all of the meetings put on to some type of a documented visual evidence for those people who did not have cable or did not have a certain channel or files or whatever on television.
My proposal was very similar to what Donna's talking about. My proposal is to mount a camera in the Administration Building, in the conference room, a permanent one, whatever it's gonna cost 1,500 or 2,000, but we would save a lot of money in the long run on people coming in, taking notes, and having all this, this way we have a general record of all the meetings. If a board member or particular committee wants their meeting recorded, they can do it. And now we have an actual record of it. That, that was my proposal in the beginning. It's cost factor.
Mrs. Andriani, I know the purpose was to move the meeting and to televise it or to tape it so that the public would have access to it. Because of the acoustics and the high ceiling in that library, when you're watching from home, it is very difficult. You really do not hear half of what goes on. So I think maybe the acoustics in the smaller room would be better, and move it to the library in the event where you expect a larger turnout for a controversial issue or a major decision of the board. But it would be my hope that the venue could be moved back to where it was in the Administration Building.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan.
Thank you, everyone, for your discussion. At this point, can we, I will allow the superintendent to speak.
From my perspective, obviously, if I was to vote on, or not even have a vote on this, but to discuss it selfishly, the Administration Building would be easier for me. It's right down the hall. When it's 2 degrees outside, I don't have to walk across the street. But I do want to voice the opinions of parents that I did meet with at the beginning of my term as the superintendent, and they did come to me and, and express that they felt more comfortable coming to the, the library because of its, I guess, more forgiving size of it, that they didn't feel that under a microscope when they walked through the door. And if they had to come in late because of any childcare issues or anything, everybody didn't turn to them and say, "Oh, look who just came in late." So they felt as, as parents who wanted to be able to attend meetings, that that meeting was more conducive and friendlier to that, that type of environment. I just give you that, because I promised them I would always remind people of that. But again, like I said, having it in the Administration Building is much easier for me.
Any further discussion? Is this, Ms. Hartman?
Yeah, I would just like to say that although the library is, you know, probably better as far as the parents and that are concerned, and the Administration Building, there was questions about having it there as long as I was on the board. I think that maybe it should be put on the agenda, and that the public should have the right, okay, to know what we're going to do if we decide to vote on it before we just take it upon ourselves to do that. Okay? This way, we're getting input from the public as to where they would like it to, to be, because, let's face it, the more people we can get to come to these agenda meetings and board meetings, all right, the better it is for the whole community. So that's only a suggestion from me, but I think that if it was put out, put on the agenda, and, Mrs. Sedidino, I've also heard that from a lot of parents, too. So I think that we should give them the opportunity of voicing how they feel before we make a decision.
Mrs. Andriani?
Thank you, Ms. Hartman, and Mr. Weber.
I, I think the only people we take attendance for at these meetings are the board members. And, and of course, the, the staff members are supposed to be there, so with all due respect to the parents, if they come in late or not, I don't know that that, from my perspective, is, is a major concern. Now, the issue of it being on film, if someone's that sensitive, you don't need to come that night, you can watch it on TV, it'll be recorded. But I think that environment is, is a much more productive environment, the acoustics are better, as Mrs. Mongan pointed out. And as she also pointed out, should there be any issue that arises to a level that requires, and it's happened in the past, we've come in here and had those meetings, we've come in the, the high school auditorium on an as-need basis, that still can go forward. And I, I think everybody here is sophisticated enough to know what the hot-button issues are and not to have to move it after the fact. We don't get surprised. We know if there's a controversial issue, whatever that issue may be, it's effectively dealt with, so. At the end of the day, we want to have productive agendas and productive business meetings as much as possible and get the board's business done, and I think that facility is, is much more user-friendly to the board to do its work.
Okay, thank you. We've heard from almost everybody. Mr. Dunn?
Yes, I just want to share and echo what Frank Weber just said. I think a more intimate environment will be a better venue for the Board of Education to conduct its business. I do agree, though, that the venue of having it in the conference room becomes an issue because it doesn't accommodate large numbers of people. And I think that Ms. Mongan had mentioned that we could forecast the, the hot topic at that night and decide to move it elsewhere. So I'm in favor of bringing it back to the conference room because of having a much more intimate environment where the board can roll up its sleeves and, and sit across the table and be able to touch and feel each other when we get into a heated discussion. I think that would be a better alternative than having it in the library, because it does get a little bit of, you know, you get lost because of the size. So I think the, the recommendation that has been brought forward is, is, is good. I think that the change of venue would be beneficial, but again, we will have the ability to move the venue if the need arises.
Thank you very much. Mr. Singh, would you like to chime in?
I think Mr. Dunn has summarized everything very well, so I, I agree with him, and Nancy has a very good point, too, so we can change it. There's any need to change after that.
All right, well, thank you. What I, one of the things that I have listened to over the years is when we have inconsistencies. So if we want to change it, let's try and at least stay consistent where it's the exception that we're going to move and we're not seesawing back and forth. Whether it's the calendar, whether it's something like this, we always seem to have discussion where the board members are feeling as if we are not being consistent. So I, I am more than willing to take a motion at this time if we want to have a vote for that, and then we would have it in the conference room in the Administration Building with some way of filming it at this time, which again, was, was part of the purposefulness of moving it so that we could have documentation. And then if it is a large audience or we have a hot, a hot topic, hot top, makes me feel good now, it's 6 degrees, we can move to a larger venue.
I would make that motion, Mrs. Andriani, but there will be no touching and feeling unless there is wine first.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right, so, Mr. Mara, we do have a motion, and we have a second. I don't think we need any more discussion, so row call, please.
Just so I'm correct, so we are changing under the agenda session to Olbridge, Olbridge Administrative Building Conference Room.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima? Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
No vote.
Mongan?
Yes, I just didn't hear. Did someone move this motion and second it? Oh, I thought, for the whole thing, for just this, okay.
Just as a matter of point of order, this would be an amendment to the existing motion, correct? We're voting on now? Okay.
Okay, Ms. Mongan, could you repeat your vote?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
So this was a vote to amend item number 2 to reflect Olbridge Conference Room for the agenda session. Is that true?
That is correct. Now we need a motion for numbers 1 and 2 to move, as amended, for Section 13, Board Secretary and Business. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. De Prima.
Second.
Mr. Weber, was that you? Mr. Weber, thank you.
Yes, it was, I was one of the voices.
Okay. No, I don't think there's any more discussion. Mr. Mara?
Andriani?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Resolutions pass.
Thank you. Number 14 is Hearing of Residents, so we are now entertaining anyone from the public that would like to speak on any issue of any concern. Dramatic pause. Okay, at this point in time, we'll close that section. Yes, sir?
8:20, things are going well.
Okay. Number, Section 15, Good of the Order. And Mr. Dunn used to start with the A's, we can work backwards if we'd like. Mr. Weber, would you like to go first?
Sure, I'd like to welcome the returning board member, Mrs. Hartman, and the two board, new board members, Mrs. Mongan and Mr. Singh. I look forward to a productive, calm, cohesive year, and for us to focus on a few major issues that are facing the district this year, such as the implementation of kindergarten, and I think it's gonna require all of us to try and work as collaboratively as possible for this year. I'd also like to wish, thank Mr. Calabella for his service, and wish him well, enjoying his retirement, wish I was there.
Mr. Singh? We'll just, we'll go this way around the table. Would you like to add something as a closing remark?
I just want to thank you and the public of Olbridge for accepting me in this position, and I think I'm honored to be among such seasoned people. I will have some opportunity to learn something, so I hope we'll work very well. Thank you.
Ms. Mongan?
I would just like to thank all of those that supported my candidacy. I wish my children could have been here, but in their place, my friends that were here, I'm truly grateful that you could attend. And this was my first attempt at an elected public office, and to receive the second highest vote count was truly very touching to me, and I feel it was a wonderful accomplishment. I'm very honored to be a member of this Old Bridge Township Board of Education, and I pledge to work with my fellow board members and administrators to focus on the quality of education in Old Bridge. In the words of Nelson Mandela, "Education is the most powerful weapon you can use to change the world." And I believe those are words that we can live by. Thank you.
Miss, thank you, Ms. Mangan. Mr. De Prima?
Okay, I'm going to need a couple of minutes, all right? On behalf of Mr. DiNofrio, I don't know how many people know, but he had a little accident this week with the ice, and he was not able to make it tonight. He did ask me to make sure that we teach, we thank the teachers' union and the PTAs. He said to thank you all for your years of support and hard work. Mrs. Callahan could not make it either because of the cold weather, car troubles. I'm sure she sends her regards and her regrets that she couldn't be here. And I just wrote a couple of things up because I didn't want to forget what I wanted to say. Annette, Nancy in Bowland, congratulations, congratulations and welcome. I look forward to working with you all so we can continue to do great things and make our wonderful school district even better. Thank you. To our departing members, Fred, thank you for your service to our students and school community. It's been a pleasure working with you this year, and I hope you will continue to be a voice in our school district. Thank you. Carol Lee and Gino, I'm pretty sure they're watching tonight. Carol Lee, through your years of PTA service, you have been a major part of our school district. I'm probably one of the few people that knows how much it really meant to you to be a part of this board. Thank you for your contributions during your time with us, and I hope to see you back next year. Thank you. And Gino, I met you about six or seven years ago. You were an acquaintance. Now I'm happy to call you my friend. Thank you for all you've done for our students and our schools. I know not everyone always agreed with some of the things you said or did, but I do know that everything you said and did was for the betterment of our students and schools. Thank you all so for your help during my first year as a board member. For most of my first year, I said I had the best seat in the house. I had our attorney to my right, whose brain I picked to make sure I didn't say anything stupid, and you to my left as an experienced board member. Thank you. And again, welcome to our new members. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sal. Mr. Silikowski?
Yes, I would like to welcome the new board members, which is Ms. Mangan, Mr. Singh, and Ms. Hartman. I'm sure we will all work very well together. There's a lot of experience there. Mr. Singh has a lot of experience in the real world with finance, I believe, and other things like this. He will be an asset. And I would like to thank Mr. Fred Colabella for the time that he spent on the board. I remember when I was first elected, I guess it was about eight years ago. He was one of my people that helped me along, and I did get an education from him. Mr. DiNofrio, I wish him a lot of luck, and I'm sure he will do well. I guess his time was up. Our old president over there, I want to thank you for the committees that he formed last year. You did a very good job on that, very diplomatic. And thank you.
Donna, I'm sorry, one second. I forgot my colleagues. Thank you for making me the vice president tonight. I'm really honored, and I think a lot of you know what this means to me to be sitting up here, and I will hope not make you sorry for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hartman?
Yes, I would like to thank everyone who came out and supported me, to bring me back up on the board I missed for a year. I certainly would like to thank my family, my husband, who was always very supportive of me, and my grandchildren coming tonight to hold the Bible for me meant an awful lot. I look forward to working with this board, okay, for the best interests of every child in this district, because that is our main job, is to work for the children of Old Bridge and for the taxpayers. I also want to thank Mr. Colabella for all of the work that he's done while he was on the board. I know Fred for a very long time, and I know that everything that he did, he did from his heart for all of the children in this district. Along with Mr. DiNofrio, okay, who also did a wonderful job while he was on the Board of Education, and it was always for the best interests of the children in the district. Mr. Gonzalez, you were an amazing president the year that you were here. I'm going to miss you because of all of the ideas and that that you brought forward, and just the fact that somebody your age was even interested in being involved in something like this says a lot. And I'm very glad that you did this. I look forward to seeing you at the meetings. Hopefully, you will be able to attend and give us some more ideas in which to go forward with. I'm also looking forward to working with all of the PTAs, all of the moms that get involved with each one of their schools, because if it wasn't for them, okay, with the things that they do in the schools for these children, I don't know sometimes where we would be. Also, I am looking forward to working with all of the educators in our school district. We have wonderful teachers. They do exceptional jobs with those children, and I've always said they're the second parents of all of our children because they are with them every day for as many hours as they are. And I thank you for everything that you do, and I look forward to being able to stop and see you all throughout the year. Okay? Other than that, again, I would like to thank everyone who was involved, and I look forward to working with all of you throughout the year so that we can all work together for the best interests of every child in this district. Thank you.
Mr. Porcelli?
Yes, I'd like to start by thanking the outgoing board members for their time and service to this district. It's a lot of hard work, they put in a lot of hours, and they've done a lot of terrific things for this district. So I thank each one of them. And I also congratulate the three incoming board members. I know all three of you are going to do a terrific job. I look forward to working with all of you. I think, you know, as Mr. Silikowski said, we bring a lot of great experience onto this board in different ways. You know, Annette's got her experience on the board, Nancy within the district, and Bowland has a lot of business experience that I think is going to be extremely beneficial to this district. So I think it's going to be a very good year to come. Donna and Sal, I congratulate you guys on president and vice president. I know you guys are going to do a terrific job leading us, and I look forward to working with all of you. Just one last note, Annette, on the PTAs, there's dads, too. We do a lot of work as well, it's not just the moms. I know, I know. I'm just kidding.
Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Good evening. As we sit here tonight, we have brought in three new board members into the mix, and I want to sincerely congratulate them for a good victory. They're here tonight, and they're here to do the kids' work. I'm sure that they have great intentions, and I'm sure we're going to work as a unified group. It's important that we remember that we're nine, and we must stay unified for what we believe in is the best for this town and the school district. And I'm confident that this group of nine will do the work that's necessary to keep Old Bridge Township Public Schools the finest. I want to also thank two of, actually, three of our exiting board members. One, Gino DiNofrio, he's played a very critical role on this board for many years. He's been here for six-plus years, and he's been president. Me and Gino had our differences, which is no secret, but we were able to find common ground and do what was in the best interest of this district. And I'm going to miss Gino dearly. I know he's not here tonight because of a medical condition which he suffered by falling on some ice in Manhattan, and he wished he could be here this evening, but unfortunately he's not. And he just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that he's thinking about everyone. He wanted to thank the teachers, the students, the administration, and fellow board members for the years of hard work that we put in together for the betterment of this district. Also, I have Fred Colabella sitting in the back. Me and Fred have our own history, and people are very aware of what history that is, and we found common ground as well. And that's something which I'm looking to this board to find that common ground as well and work together. If I can work with Fred and Gino, I think we all can work together, and that's what I'm striving for. I'm going to miss you, Fred. We've had our differences, we've battled, we've argued, we've had some heated debates, but we found common ground, and thank you for your years of service. Also, real quick, my year, or my five months as president, was a very rewarding experience, and I appreciate the Board of Education, the administration, and all the, in the public for helping me and supporting me through those five months. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to throw my hat in the ring this year because of my commitment with the South Old Bridge Fire Department, becoming a house captain for the Rock Morton House, so my time is very valuable, and I had to dedicate there as well. So with that said, I'm looking for a great year. I'm confident that this board is going to do the right thing for the children and taxpayers of this wonderful town, and we do have our work cut out for us. There's a lot of things on the horizon coming up, and we need to work as a unified group, and I'm hoping that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Before my comments, I would like to extend an invitation to our two ladies at the end. You are here at all the meetings, and unless someone asks you a direct question, you don't ever get a chance to have a closing comment. We hear Mr. Sedidino in his superintendent's report, we hear Mr. Marra, Mr. Parton, but we never get to hear from you. And I don't mean to put you on the spot. If you'd like to say something, this would be a time for it. And if not, please be aware that at our meetings, before we close, I will invite you to speak if you have any comments that you would like to add.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. I would just like to congratulate the new board members as well as the outgoing board members and wish them all well. It's always a pleasure to work collaboratively with the Board of Education for the good of the school district. We're here to serve, and we're certainly here to address any ideas, concerns, or suggestions that you have to offer us. And as I said, it's always a pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
I don't think I've ever quite been told that I didn't have much to say, or that I, you know, usually it's the other way, that I'm talking too much, but I certainly learn a lot sitting here, taking it all in. So I like that role right now, but I also have the same sentiments and thank those that are outgoing and welcome those that are incoming. And I think we've had a good run so far this school year, and I'm looking forward to what's coming up in the future.
Terrific. Thank you both very much for your service and your presence at the meetings. In terms of my good of the order, first, I would like to thank everybody in the audience that is here. Thank you for coming out, especially on bitter, cold days, as is today. I would be remiss if I did not mention the fact that we have some council members here. Mr. Green is in the back, thank you for attending. Mrs. Sohar is here, and I believe that the two of them are here for the council. So thank you very much. We always keep saying that the taxpayer pocket is only one pocket, so the better that we can work together and would be beneficial for all of us concerned. So thank you again for coming. In terms of closing comments for me, Mr. Gonzalez, you know what? It's been a good run. I missed you when you were gone. There are many times I wanted to just tell you how young I thought you were, which was a hidden meaning for how old you made me feel, but we learned a lot in the process, and I thank you very much for your service. And as I believe it was Ms. Hartman said, to have somebody at your age want to serve and not only do a good job and look to learn and grow while you're doing it is just phenomenal. So character education is, thank you very much. So thank you. Ms. Callahan is not here. I'd like to thank her for stepping up and stepping in, in the interim, so I thank you, Carol Lee, if you're listening someplace. Gino is not here, Mr. DiNofrio. And I know that you and the audience, or those of you watching at home, you see one perspective, and Mr. DiNofrio, we can all agree, is assertive and aggressive, perhaps, and many, many times over the top, but there's a lot of things about him that you do not see that we get to see in closed session. And without a doubt, any decision that he's made has always been for the children, and you all have to know that. So Gino, I appreciate all your years of service. Thank you very much, and I'm sure that you're watching. And Mr. Colabella, I have to say the same for you, that people see what they see while they're sitting here or they're watching at home. What everybody does not know is that Mr. Colabella is the first one to reach in his pocket for a large donation for anything. Mr. Colabella is the first one to offer somebody a ride. He's the first one to offer his time and his attention for anybody that needs anything. You are a true gentleman. You have been here for the children over and over again, and I need to thank you for your service. Thank you very, very much, and you will be greatly missed. Thank you very much. With that, our new people, Mr. Singh, I'm glad to see you aboard, okay? And Ms. Hoffman, I'm glad that you have returned. And Ms. Mangan, it's nice to have you on the other side of the table. And Mr. Sedidino had said to me, "Ooh, it's early, so I need to shut up now." So at this point, I'm ready to close and ready to adjourn. Mr. Sedidino, do you have any comments?
I don't want to be redundant, so I'll just keep it brief, and I celebrate the history of this recent board and their accomplishments and the fine work of very honorable people in Mr. Colabella, Mr. DiNofrio, and Ms. Callahan, and of course, Mr. Gonzalez. And I look forward to, with anticipated excitement of the great things we're all going to accomplish together with our new board members and returning board members, Ms. Hartman, Ms. Mangan, and Mr. Singh. Congratulations, and let's get some work done.
Okay, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Dunn will second.
Webber is right on there. Mr. Dunn is number two. Roll call, Mr. Marra.
Andriani?
Oh, yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh? Singh?
Mr. Singh, girl.
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yeah. This is the.
Weber?[1718.15]